This conference will now be recorded.
I've got an amazing career and I hope to just continue to move forward. So, I thank you guys for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any questions? Commissioners of Mesa Rosco?
I don't have questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience or online wishing to speak in opposition of case 24-010? You can forward. Okay. If there are none, can I hear a motion for case 24-010 SUP?
Sure. Based on land use and zoning considerations, findings of facts, conclusions of law surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, materials presented and testimony received, I motion to approve case 24-010 SUP.
Second.
It was quicker. We have a motion from Commissioner Holloman and a second from Commissioner Lazard to approve case 24-010 SUP. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you guys.
Congratulations ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I greatly appreciate you guys. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, have a great night. Okay, moving on. Um, only case today, other business. Meredith.
That was fun.
Thank you Chair Aguilar Commissioners. Last week, there was a regional economic development and housing summit. It was coordinated by the Southeast New Mexico, Southeastern New Mexico Economic Development District. It was Regional Housing and Economic Development Summit. It was well attended by representatives from the five surrounding counties. I'm not sure if anyone from the Mescalero tribe was here or not, but yes, oh great. So Miguel said there was indeed, awesome. So the three of us attended, Jessica Vickers, Miguel Martinez and I attended this event. And we learned a lot about, there was some data presented by Purdue University. And it was pretty eye-opening if you could understand it all. It was a lot of just data.
Shirley Wells, what happened? What did you learn?
What did we learn? Well, we are definitely in a housing crisis as the rest of the country is. We are several thousand units short in this region. We also have some solutions. The three of the mayors spoke from Rialdo so, from Hobbs and from Artesia. And they told about solutions that they've come up with in each of their communities, as well as Lee County, Mike Gallagher, the county manager, also spoke about some solutions that they've come up with. And of course, the modular home manufacturing plant that's opening is a solution as well, not only for Roswell and Chavez County, but the whole region and a 10-hour radius region as well.
Is the modular place building yet or not yet?
They've hired 20 people so far and they, their plans, two of their plan sets have gone to CID. And our building official, Miller Butts, has a meeting online with them on Thursday.
Nice.
So, yeah.
Wonderful.
With CID.
Yeah. Awesome.
Just to, I guess, iron out a couple of details. But it looks very positive and they hope to employ over 300 people.
So I heard. Should be good for Roswell.
Definitely, the whole region.
Yeah.
So, we can cooperate. This was the first economic development and housing summit for our region, put on by the COG, so it's, I thought it was very positive. I thought it was really well attended and everyone learned a lot. I spoke, I presented about neighborhood stabilization and my research, as well as the American Planning Association has a new program in conjunction and partnership with the the National League of Cities, there we go. The National League of Cities, and it's called the Housing Supply Accelerator Playbook. It's just been published a couple of weeks ago and released. I heard about it at the conference I attended, the American Planning Association National Conference in April. So that was fun to present that. And I said that this region is already doing so much of the information that the playbook suggests. The playbook is a framework for local governments and we're already doing a lot. So I think the framework could be a supporting framework for the additional work that we're going to be doing here. The MFA New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority also spoke at the conference and a lot of the programs that they offer, the playbook had recommended. So, New Mexico is, is right there doing stuff to get housing into the marketplace. All types of housing, including affordable and attainable housing.
Good to know.
I really enjoyed the summit. I attended a couple of the sessions. Meredith, I really enjoyed your research report that you did. It seemed very thorough and I can't wait to actually look, look back at the, at the links that you provided. I really enjoyed your idea about Neighborhood Watch and Keep Roswell Beautiful and just kind of combining those things to get the neighborhoods looking better and on track. I think that's something that we should look at getting started.
Thanks. Need anything else from Jessica or Bagill? Right, that's, that's our report.
Second what you said, it was actually very informative. There was a lot of things that, that we were already aware of. There were other specific details that we were not so aware of, that we were curious about, that they, everyone got together and brought a lot of information. It was a lot to take in, a lot to consider moving forward and definitely second your presentation. You, you did, you did very good there and it was a lot of information you put together, so kudos to you.
Awesome. We have some Reno A-races coming here, or Roswell A-races now, I guess. No more Reno, that's exciting.
More Reno.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Yeah. Actually, right after the summit, we held a press conference.
Excellent.
So it's something really exciting to be about.
It's official.
You know, I sit on the chair for, no, I'm sorry, I sit on the board for economic development and I think a lot of it, you know, I've been here for quite a while and the time I realized that our kids are going to grow up here is when you start getting a little bit more involved. And we, we, that's when, and not only for that reason, but you know, if you're a part member of the community, it's so easy to sit on the sidelines and complain and so easy to just, you know, oh Roswell doesn't do this, Roswell doesn't do that, but how many people stand up and do something about it? Friend of mine told me about a, he's, he's a hotel owner, talking about complaining about lodger's tax, how many lodger's tax meetings have you gone to? He said, when are they? You know, he has no idea. So I think that this is important, we all get involved, you know, but.
Thank you.
Everybody, because I know all of us, well, as commissioners, you know, we donate our time, staff, y'all do a great job and thank you for attending that summit.
My pleasure.
Thank you for attending that too.
Yes, always good.
Any other comments? Sorry?
I have one more item.
Okay.
Last Tuesday, I attended the State of New Mexico Community Conversation Series, Planning for Climate Change and Building Resilience in Roswell, New Mexico. It was held at the university, Eastern New Mexico, University of Roswell Occupational Technology Center. And it was hosted by the Department of Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources. And there were six people from Roswell who showed up to this nice event, so I think there were more staff than participants, but I was able to put my two cents in, is what I see about Roswell and our needs and things that I've observed. So I'm glad I was able to go and attend that.
You know, sometimes it's not a whole bunch of us, but it's important that somebody show up and represent, you know? Thank you for that.
Can you email us your presentation? I'd love to just read it again.
Sure, it's, it's also on the link.
Okay.
So I can send everyone the link, hopefully that the conference put together.
Thank you Meredith. Uh, let's see, any other public comments or announcements?
Do have an announcement. We've been talking about updating our code for quite some time. Our zoning ordinance, our subdivision code and our cannabis code are all currently being worked on. There was an order sent down from city council to start looking at it and, and get things on track we need to. We have several new counselors and a couple new commissioners here that are not too familiar with exactly what we do, why we do it and what's actually in the code. So it's a good time to go back over it. We're actually going to rewrite them. And what I'm going to request is to schedule some workshops so we can all go over it together. Make sure we're on the same page, go over it's, it's, it's going to be a long tedious process. You've been here before, so you remember the small portion that we did, this will be the entire code. So it'll be a great time for all of you to learn everything inside and out, have some input and really be familiar with what we do, why your job is so important, why we do what we do and how it actually builds up our entire community. And we'll also help break down some of them walls that, that we have between us and city council to work better together. So I wanted to give you a heads up on that and we, we would really like to start scheduling some workshops. The question is, how often do you want them and when would you be available? Is once a month going to be enough PNZ? Are we looking at twice a month so we can go over it? My conversation with city council earlier is that they want to be directly involved, hands-on, that even if they can't be here, they will be communicating through email, so we'll be sending updates back and forth.
So you're talking about a workshop, just open conversations?
Yes.
Okay.
It would, it would have, the idea is to get it all out in the open, everyone come on the same page, because once we, once we decide we're ready, we're going to submit the entire thing in one go. So it will, it would have to go through the planning, zoning commission, it'll go through the legal commission and then it'll be finalized through city council. So it's quite the process just to even get it approved.
Is this an open workshop where the public is invited? Or is this only council, PNZ and legal or?
I can answer that. These will have to be advertised in the paper. The public is invited and welcome. It's a working workshop for, for you and some people may want to, to provide input for you to consider.
Okay. I just have a comment towards that is, you know, oftentimes, we, I'd like to, and just, just food for thought. Anybody who's done business in Roswell, the young lady who came to here today, in my opinion, she shouldn't be here. You know, that should be something that should be already in the code. And the gentleman who was here, I can't remember his last name, maybe three times, from Brasher. Things like this, I think, figure, you could tell he was frustrated, he goes, alright, we're just going through the motions. There's things that we shouldn't waste staff's time, city's time.
So those are the, the very situations we're talking about. It's not just them, but there have been many cases like that. It's becoming more aware that by the time it gets to city council, it's, it's already unbearable for everyone. So now that we have their attention, they want ours. That's why they want this done. So the idea is to provide a forward way of thinking for the entire community. That's why they want, they don't want amendments, they want a rewrite.
Right.
So this is the best time to get hands-on experience for everyone involved. And if you have something to say, this is the time to say it.
I agree.
Everyone's encouraged you, whether it be a property owner, a business owner, a commissioner, just a concerned citizen, come ask questions. I've said it countless times, I would rather explain something to you a thousand times so we can get it done right the first time, than to watch you take that one wrong step and then we have to backtrack because it turns into the scenarios that we've already dealt with that created more of a hardship than what should have already been there.
I think too often do we have citizens who come in here once in their lifetime and have no idea which way to go or any kind of action to take. I think it's, I think it's important, you know, for us to make it simpler. And if staff does a great job, we can only do so much with what the code has been written.
Exactly.
I don't know what y'all's comments are, commissioners, your thoughts, but.
No, I think, I think we.
I echo that. I definitely echo that Commissioner Aguilar. I think a simpler process is important. I did feel for that gentleman who came to us. It took him three months to get that approval granted, I'm sure there are circumstances, no doubt. But I will echo that it needs to be a more simple streamlined process. And I know that PNZ, the planning and zoning department works very hard and I know that the processes can be tedious, but I do think that a workshop on various issues is a great idea. And I welcome that along with, it needs to be an organized meeting where things have already been written down and to help lead that process.
Agreed.
So I'm actually putting some text together now to introduce and that's where we would start. And the first one that I'm proposing to start with is the cannabis code, because that's the one I've put the most work in. I feel it's ready to present and move forward. I'm really hoping that it goes smooth, but I also know, you know, being realistic, it's going to, you know, take a while, it's going to be a lot of work, a lot of input from everyone. Just keep in, in mind for, specifically for the two of you, it is going to be a lot. You're not going to please everyone, there's, there's no way to do that. The best thing is to keep in mind the best vision for Roswell in general. And it, it's not always easy, it's going to be difficult in some ways, more than others. Other parts of it, you think may be difficult, may actually be the easiest, but this is the best way to learn.
Chair Aguilar.
Couldn't be more upfront than that.
Commissioners, Miguel's reached out to the state as well to find out what is absolutely necessary as part of the process for cannabis as well.
No, I think it's, it's very good. I think the time is right to, to look at this and I'm glad we're kind of taking it back to formula and, and just coming from, from a total rewrite on it, I think makes a lot of sense so that we know what we're dealing with. It seems to me like we've dealt, particularly with the cannabis thing, almost every one of the cases that have come before us have had, you know, special use conditions or variances that have, have gone along with them. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that we've got specific, you know, guidelines in our code that state we're not going to allow, you know, this type of business in, in this area, this area, this area. And it seems like almost every case that comes before us, we're ignoring those guidelines and approving them anyway. So everything has been, been under that, that kind of variance format. And I think the variances should be the exception rather than the rule. So I'm glad we're looking at that, I appreciate it very much.
And that's exactly why I wanted to start with cannabis, because there was, there was a lot that came with it from every case. There were many questions from commissioners, from counselors, from the public, from staff. I mean, even as we're building and we're, we're sitting there scratching our heads on some of it, it just, it was just the way that it was written up was a way to start, but quickly failed.
Yeah.
It was time to take a look at it.
Well, that business, that, that industry in New Mexico and in Roswell in particular has just exploded and I think it got ahead of us. And I think that it's a good time to look at it and see how we can, can really look how we move forward in a, in a concise way.
Agreed. I'm more planning ahead and being proactive than reactive. I don't like picking up the pieces after it's already fallen apart. I would rather stay on top of it so I can anticipate a move forward and adjust as, as I need to and not, not keep taking steps backwards.
Good, good.
Agreed. Any other comments?
Um, I, I think that if we're going to get this done and it's a timely matter, we should probably meet twice a month to get it started. And then once, you know, it's rolling and it's in motion, maybe move to once a month from there.
In addition to, to our, our monthly meetings, if you're sure.
Twice, including this or twice plus this?
I'm not sure, what are your, what are your thoughts?
I would say an additional workshop meeting each month in, in addition to our, our monthly PNZ meeting.
Everybody's busy staff, us, you know, we're all busy and I agree. Commissioner Holloman, you know, I think a focused, like, like y'all had mentioned, a focused thought out, okay, we're going to tackle this right now. We're not going to vary, we're not going to get away, this is the only thing we're trying to work out right now. And so, so oftentimes do we get to working on something, we start And so, so oftentimes do we get to working on something and we start talking about, especially and it's so easy to do when we have, uh, you know, five members of the public or something like that. It's there, it's easy for us to get veer away from the one task at hand. But if we tackle a certain thing and we go and have our, our, our meeting at that time, then I think it's a lot more effective than, uh, you know, many meetings of just conversation.
I agree with that.
So what we used to do was we would meet twice a month. We would meet every two weeks, I believe. I think it was the second Tuesday and then the fourth Tuesday, which is our standing planning and zoning meeting. We would meet the hour prior to planning and zoning, so we can go over, um, the proposed text and discussions. And then we would have our planning and zoning meeting. And as we, as we continued working through, uh, our workshops and we, we found, we, we came to an agreement on the text that we wanted, then we made our recommendation to take it to planning and zoning, then to legal, then to city council.
So you're, if I, so you mentioned earlier, twice a month, but you said a month, an hour before our normal PNZ, or is it?
Yes, it should be one, one meeting and then an hour before.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So we would be, uh, five to six would be our scheduled workshop and then from six to whenever we finish would be our scheduled planning and zoning.
And then like on the second Tuesday would be a, a three-hour workshop? What would that be?
If we wanted to schedule one for that long? I'm not sure you want to do that to yourself, but.
What, what I don't want is to have the next, you know, 18 months spent in rewriting all of, all of the code. If we're, if we're really looking at a comprehensive rewrite, it seems like we're going to have quite a few hours of meeting time. So one hour at a time isn't going to accomplish that, that much, so.
Think about, you know, we've only been talking about this for 15 minutes and we're only just getting an idea. But yeah, I agree. It's going to take time.
Yeah.
Which is why I gave the warning. It will, one, take some time and two, you know, once a month is, you know, not enough, but you don't want to do so much at a time that you're going to burn yourselves on, on either. It, it, it needs to make sense as we go.
I also.
Sorry, sorry. No, I would just think that, that if, if we were going to have a scheduled workshop just to do that, that two to three hours is, is probably what we would need to really dig into that specific issue and then revisit it again in the one hour prior to PNZ, uh, just to kind of clarify any, any outstanding issues would, would be productive. Uh, I just don't think that, you know, an hour here and there is going to get us moving along very forward.
An hour doesn't really do a whole lot for us.
Yeah.
Really, in, in the grand scheme of things. I mean, you look at how many pages you got to review. An hour is.
Well, and I would assume you would, you would be sending this out prior for our review and.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you would, you would have it ahead of time.
Communicating through email in the meantime, until we're all together, I think something like that's important.
Okay, so if we're, if we're looking at more than an hour at a time, uh, Jessica, we'd have to talk a different schedule. Because then we get into overtime, which is another discussion on our, on our side.
Okay.
So if you're open to, uh, a meeting during the daytime during working hours, that, that'd be something.
If I know ahead of time during the day, I mean, I can break away for an hour at a time, two hours at a time, you know?
As well.
And I think most of us can break away for a couple of hours during the day, after lunch, during lunch.
Like if we need to, or if we need to start at like four in the afternoon and go till six, something like that, if that, if that would alleviate the, the overtime issue, then I think we could manage that once a month.
A light luncheon and, you know, something like that where we just all get together.
Okay.
I'm, I'm moving to all those ideas.
Sure.
If I just know ahead of time and probably the rest of us know ahead of time, I'm pretty sure we can accommodate.
And again, understanding that it's, it's going to be, uh, difficult to schedule with everyone, uh, we will, I've had success communicating through email as well. So all of you, everything that, that I work on, everyone will have. I, I welcome all comments. So even if you can't make it, send me your comments. That way we can start looking through it and we can discuss it there.
And I think even, even, even moving forward, I think there's going to be some of these work, not everybody's going to make it, but communication is important through email or phone calls or however, maybe email is probably preferable. But, um, there's, there's going to be times where we all don't make it and that's okay. But, um, as long as we're all involved and, you know.
That, that's the biggest thing I want is, is open communication. Is that, I don't want anyone to feel left out, they're not being heard. I, I, I want everyone's input. Like I said, this, this is a, a big task. It's, it's a big ask of everyone's part, but it's also so important.
If everyone, my personal opinion, if everyone isn't being heard, it's just because they're not speaking up, because I think y'all are so open to comments. So if anybody does have any kind of comment, please, I mean, with no bias, I mean, just say what's, what you're thinking. And that's the idea of this commission, is that we all have different points of views and we all come forward and come towards a solution.
Exactly that. That's, there, there's no one right answer. I, I would, I can handle a no, I can handle constructive criticism. The only thing I ask is that it's not a no just because.
Yeah.
But like, let's openly talk about it.
I agree. I agree. Meredith?
I think in today's world with regard to technology, though, most of us are pretty familiar with Zoom and, um, other forms of, uh, communication in that way. I like the idea that it would be emailed out to us so we could review it. I think that, um, will create a more organized meeting, but, um, I, I highly recommend that we do like a lot, you know, some kind of Zoom-type meeting.
And we could probably set up a, a go-to meeting just like this.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't see why that would be an issue. And we would definitely have plenty of notice for everyone.
To our advantage. I personally, I like personal interactions. Sometimes we can't all make it and that, that's understood. There's times I've called in, you know, no big deal, but you know, being involved, I think is the important part here.
So.
Leave us posted, let us know.
Yeah, I'll definitely, uh, sit down with Jessica and we'll see if we can work out a schedule and then I'll, I'll let you know as soon as possible, so we can start scheduling that time and, and let's get this done. It's rock and roll.
Are we going to send, um, to recommendations to legal and council portions at a time, entire portions at a time? Like you mentioned cannabis, let's lock this out. Residential, let's lock this out, industrial, commercial and so on? Is that the plan or?
So cannabis will be done all in one go. And then the subdivision code will be done in one go. And then the zoning ordinance will be done in one go. What, what I was specifically told was not to take one little piece at a time. They want it all done and, and ready to submit.
I agree. It'll take some work, but.
So we, we have three codes we're looking at. And first, like I said, first will be cannabis. And once we finish cannabis and, and get that pushed through, next will be subdivision. And then after we finish that one, then we'll start zoning.
Do you have a goal for the timeline?
Probably take about a year, but I, I'd like to push my luck and test my limits. I'm aiming for the end of the year to have all three of them done. That's my goal.
That's some commitment. Any other questions, comments, announcements? Meredith?
Chair Aguilar, commissioners, yeah, it's a laudable goal for sure. And I think Miguel will do his best. We will all do our best to streamline the process as much as possible. Might give you options A and B that you can consider. You are very welcome to be creative as well. In my planning practice, I've seen some very creative solutions to ordinances, especially from, from Elephant Butte. And we can discuss all that later. I just want to let you know too, that this is on the right track in terms of national policy from the American Planning Association. I heard the president of the organization, Angela Brooks, talk and she said, she specifically said, make your code simpler. If, if something can be done administratively, do that instead of spending 10 hours of staff time to do a variance or a special use permit.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, totally agree with that.
Even what Commissioner Holland mentioned, you know, especially with cannabis, you know, it's been so gray. The clearer we can get it, much better off we are. And I understand your, your temperament, you know, it's, now it's been, variance have been the rule. And the same thing goes for many other little things that can be, like you said, handled in.
Administration.
Administrative level.
Certainly, I think clarity is, is key and, and having the, uh, administration and staff be able to handle certain things is, is great. I, I would, as we move into the process, I would conscious, caution us as, as planning and zoning and as the commission, that we need to be clear on, on our, our line and, and what our purpose is. And although I, I very much am in support of promoting business in Roswell and not hindering that in any way, our, like, our purpose as a, a commission is not for economic development, but it is to protect the citizens of Roswell and to make sure that things are done in, in an organized, orderly and, and sensible fashion, uh, that doesn't, doesn't hinder business, but we're not here specifically just to give a green light to, to business at the expense of the, of the citizens. So we have to bear that in, into, to mind as to what our, our intent and purpose of, of a zoning ordinance is for. It's not for economic development. It is really for the betterment of the community as a whole and how this community functions together with all the businesses, all the residents.
Chair Aguilar, Commissioner Holland, to reiterate, zoning comes under the police powers for the health, welfare and safety of the public.
Hold on ahead. And I think it's real important that we keep that in mind, all of us. Anything else, any other comments from anybody online, on the phone?
Nothing for me.
All right. It is.